...with the candidates for the Bismarck City Commission. I'm Dot Frank with the League of Women Voters and I will be tonight's moderator. This candidate forum has been organized by the League of Women Voters of Bismarck Mandan and is co-sponsored by the Bismarck Tribune and Dakota Media Access. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that promotes the informed participation of all citizens in their government. The League does not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. There is one candidate running for reelection and two open seats on the commission. And we have all eight who have joined us here tonight. They include Nancy Guy, Micah Miller, Doug Philp, Dwayne Poole, Steve Marquart, Kimberly Baden-Hopp, Mike Motzenbacher, and Josh Axfig. The audience is invited to submit questions using the index cards provided to you. Viewers at home can phone in questions by dialing 355-1312 between 6:00 and 7:00 p.m. tonight only, May 21st. That number again is 355-1312. This is intended to be a respectful exchange of ideas. Our purpose this evening is to provide voters with information about the candidates and their positions on issues that affect the people of Bismarck. Now, let's meet our candidates. You each have one minute to tell us why you are seeking election to the Bismarck City Commission. We'll begin with Nancy Guy.
Thank you, Dot, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting on this event. It's really a terrific way for voters to find out how candidates stand on the issues. Well, I'm running because first and foremost, I love Bismarck and I wouldn't live anywhere else. In this period of unprecedented growth, it's critical that our city commission take a long view in every aspect of governance. We have only one opportunity to guide this explosive growth in a manner that retains and enhances the quality of life we cherish. My parents, former Governor Bill and Jean Guy, believed in public service. They passed down to each of their children basic North Dakota values of community, integrity, accountability, and thrift. They believed that you take care of today but still plan for tomorrow. I'll apply those values to every decision I make as a city commissioner.
Thank you. Now, Micah Miller.
Hi, thank you for inviting me here. I chose to run because Bismarck is an evolving city. It's growing, it's changing. We have new demographics coming into our city and young families. I'm young, I have a young family, and I feel that the commission should represent the changing demographics of this city and should have a broader representation of the demographics. And I feel that I can bring in my analytical mind, my ability to think for solutions outside the box, and I think it's a beneficial quality I can bring to the commission and to this community. And I love this community. I grew up here, and I, like Nancy said, I wouldn't live anywhere else. Thank you.
And now Doug Philp.
Good evening, Dot. Thank you, and thank you, League of Women Voters, for having me here this evening. I am Doug Philp, and I'm running because I believe the citizens of Bismarck are being taken for granted and that special interests are setting the agenda, so to speak, before the city. And I believe that Bismarck deserves better. I would say that I'm qualified because I understand that leaders lead by casting vision, and elected officials then need to listen to the residents and how they would respond to that vision. If, for example, the residents said no to certain parts of the vision, true representation would mean ditching all or part and starting over if that was necessary. As commissioner, I intend to cast vision, to listen to people's opinions, and to represent them accordingly, and vote their will rather than mine. In other words, the people would set the agenda.
And now Dwayne Poole.
Hi, I'm Dwayne Poole. I'm running because of fundamental process and a fundamental belief in the democratic process. This is not my first or my only commitment to public service. I've served on the Judicial Conduct Commission before. I currently serve on the State Health Council. I served as the Citizen Incident-
Dwayne, can you make sure your microphone? Thank you.
I served as the Citizen Incident Commander for the 2009 flood sandbag operations. As a family, we all believe in volunteerism and community participation. Bismarck is my community. Our daughters are both moving back to Bismarck, and we want to make this as viable, as vibrant, and as safe a community as we can so that they have the same opportunities as they matriculate through their life process that we've had in the community that we've been able to be a part of and serve to this point. So, my reason for running is I want there to be a vision for the future, and a vision for the future that includes the residents of Bismarck in participating in the process and a safe and vibrant community for them to matriculate through.
Steve Marquart.
Thank you, Dot. My name is Steve Marquart. I'm running for city commission because I feel I've got the most experience out of anyone that's sitting on the panel here today. Being on the school board for eight years, I've seen the growth of Bismarck with the school district and being able to handle that growth. And I think I've got the background and the leadership ability and the voting record already on hand on how we've done that and how we have a vision to be able to make Bismarck grow. There's interesting little intricacies that Bismarck needs, and I feel that I've been there, done that. Like I said, we've seen unprecedented growth, and I think I am the best qualified candidate to be able to help Bismarck, the city of Bismarck, with that growth and help it make it the community that I love today, that I've raised my family in, and to make it better for the future.
Kimberly Baden-Hopp.
Hi, like a lot of people, I am very aware, as I believe most citizens of Bismarck are with our population growth and our increasing traffic, safety concerns. We have a lot of new neighborhoods and a lot of business development. And I started talking with some friends about some of my concerns about how Bismarck will handle those things, what some of my ideas were, and I was encouraged by some friends to consider running for city commission. They know that I have work experience very similar to the commission from the past, and I believe that Bismarck is an excellent community and we can keep it the excellent community it is as it continues to grow, and I'd like to be a part of helping that happen and preserve what we are today.
Mike Motzenbacher.
Thanks, Dot, and thanks- Thank you, League of Women Voters, for giving us all the opportunity to be here tonight and to introduce ourselves to yourselves and to the public. My name is Mike Motzenbacher, and I've been a resident of Bismarck for approximately 24 years. I've been employed at Expressway and Suites for the last 23 and been in management down there for approximately the last 20. And the reason I'm running is I really believe that I, with my 20 years of private sector experience, I can bring some new ideas to the city commission. And I, someone like myself, who has worked with public also for several years in this business, I also, you know, have the experience, have already worked with them, and I think I'd like to continue to do that. You know, and Bismarck is growing at an alarming pace right now, and we need good leadership to continue moving forward, and I believe I have that quality. You know, I'd like to continue to work on controlling costs of government, providing builders and developers the needed tools so they can keep up with the demand that is, you know, so needed right now without any unnecessary delays or regulations. And I've got red flagged here. Get used to that, sorry.
And Commissioner Josh Axfig.
Well, good evening. I'm Bismarck City Commissioner Josh Axfig, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters, the Bismarck Tribune, and Dakota Media Access for giving us an opportunity to talk about where we're going with Bismarck. Four years ago, when I was elected to the city commission, I pledged to keep Bismarck moving forward. And I think if you look at our record over the last four years, whether it's the fact that our ratings on national agendas rate us as some of the safest communities, some of the most prosperous communities, or one of the best young professional business climate communities, that we've achieved that. But there's a lot more to do, and that's why the first thing I did four years ago was bring citizens and groups together to write the roadmap for the future of Bismarck known as the City of Bismarck Strategic Plan. We're 65 percent of the way on either substantial completion or starting projects, and I believe that needs to be fully implemented so that we can reach the vision of being a safe and prosperous community where individuals want to live, learn, work, and play.
Thank you all. And now we'll move on to the questions developed by members of the League of Women Voters, the Bismarck Tribune, and our audience here tonight, and our viewers at home. For our audience here to submit questions, please use the index cards provided on your chairs. Viewers at home may phone in questions by calling 355-1312 between 6:00 and 7:00 p.m. tonight, May 21st. That number again is 355-1312. Candidates have not been given advance copies of the questions, and each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond to each question. Please comply with our time restrictions so that we may get to as many questions as possible tonight. Our timer will let you know when you are down to 30 seconds, then 10 seconds, and then stop. And now we'll begin with our questions. For the first question, we'll begin with Ms. Guy. What do you believe are priority issues for the city of Bismarck in the next four years?
I think our highest priority issue is affordable housing. If you look at all of the issues that face Bismarck right now, almost all of them circle back to affordable housing. So, we need to do everything we can to address that issue, and we can't regulate our way out of it. It's an economic market deal, and we just have to increase the inventory as quickly as possible. So, the city needs to refine its permitting and inspections process, and they need to work with developers very closely to get those neighborhoods up as fast as possible to help bring the price of the housing down.
Same question for Mrs. Miller.
I think some of our prominent issues, like Nancy said, is affordable housing. I mean, like, we have a lot of people coming into Bismarck, not a lot of people can afford to live here. I mean, I'm a young family, I own a home, first-time homeowner. I know what it's like. It's expensive and it's scary. But I also think another issue that we need to deal with, too, is our infrastructure and keeping it maintained and balanced and keeping our supply up with demand, and looking at new ways to fund our projects, not just depending on our residents. And we need to listen to our residents, take their concerns into question and into consideration. We need to work with our developers and along with other officials, not just city. The county and the city needs to work together, compromise, be willing to listen and work. And I think that's some of our biggest priorities.
Same question for Mr. Philp. What do you believe are priority issues for the city of Bismarck in the next four years?
First and foremost, I can't disagree with affordable housing. I'll address that here in a moment. I would say more toward the social side of things with the influx of individuals coming all across the country, have cultural differences in the way people deal with life. So, just to be able to back up from that a little bit and to reinstitute simple programs like Neighborhood Watch, Child Safe Homes, where kids can be identified with and know homes that they can go to if they're in times of danger or trouble, something like that. Simple programs like that. With affordable housing, I think that first and foremost, we need to define affordable, whether that's single-family homes or twin homes, or mobile homes even, or apartment rentals, and what the cost would be. And then from there, everybody has the ability to reach that target goal.
And now we'll begin with a new question for candidate Poole. What is the first issue you would address if you are elected to the Bismarck City Commission?
I think the first- I think the first issue that I'd like to address if I were elected to the Bismarck City Commission would be public confidence and trust. I think there have been some communication issues with the public regarding different decisions that were made that were put in the hands of the public then taken away from the public. I think we need to work as a commission that if we have information that's contrary or different from what's out there in the public, that we share that information so that they see why the decisions that are being made are made in the way that the city commission thinks they should be. But at the same time, I think that needs to be a partnership with the various media outlets as well as the commission trying to get that word out in public information. So, my biggest issue is the public has to have faith and confidence that the people sitting on this commission are going to have their interests in mind, and when the public does speak, that we actually pay attention to what they're saying. And if we need to re-educate the people on new information, we do that. Otherwise, we accept what the people say.
And Mr. Marquart.
Basically, that's what I've done on the school board. You know, we found a need that we needed to get out there. We went out to the public, we passed an $86.5 million bond, but it wasn't easy. We had to get out and work for it. And then basically, like Mr. Poole said, it is communication, but there's also finance to run some of the programs that Mr. Philp wants. And also, we need to streamline our city planning to be able to get some of the stuff and infrastructure put up a little bit quicker. But with a growing community, like with our school district, you have to make sure that if you're so big, you have to have enough personnel to be able to handle all the influx of people. We are getting influx of people. Our social services are getting stretched, we see that on the school district, but you have to hire more people. But you also have to figure out where that funding is going to come from, and it's going to have to be a blend. Along with affordable housing, same thing. If we wanted them in a certain spot, we have to make sure that that's what's going to go, city planning.
And same question for Ms. Baden-Hopp. What is the first issue you would address if you were elected to the Bismarck City Commission?
I think the first issue that needs to be addressed by the commission is to look at infrastructure funding. The city has passed a growth plan, the current commission has, and the growth plan gives some suggestions for funding but doesn't give any final solutions for funding. And traditionally, we've had our infrastructure funded through federal dollars, and it's very likely that those federal dollars may not continue, and so I think that would be a very critical issue to address immediately if I were elected to the commission.
And a new question now for Mr. Motzenbacher. What is your vision for the future of Bismarck?
My vision for the future of Bismarck is to bring good families into the city so we can grow properly. And where the rest of the country is struggling finding jobs for the people, we're struggling finding people for the jobs. And a lot of people say that's a good problem to have. It's not always roses, I guess you could say, but what I would like to see is, we need to make Bismarck a destination city. And by doing so, we will attract the right people. We need to have things in place for people to do, for the, you know, citizens to gather. We need things for the children, the youth, that they can gather, sports activities and such like that. So, it needs to be a destination city where people want to move to Bismarck. And I think I have some good fresh ideas, and I would love to share those with the city and the commission and hopefully move those forward.
Commissioner Axfig.
Thanks, Dot.
See now, I even forgot to turn on the microphone. My vision is Bismarck's vision. We went out four years ago and asked the citizens, what do they want to see the future of Bismarck look? And they told us what some have already said here, that we want to be a destination community where people come so they can be prosperous and they want to live, learn, work, and play. And if you look at my record over the last four years, that's what we've done. That's why I fought for park ordinance in new developments in spite of people telling me it was a fool's errand. We brought citizens together, we brought developers together, we found a solution to ensure that we could have strong neighborhoods and tight-knit communities. That's why I fought for curbside recycling so that in the future, we get to continue to use our current landfill rather than pay and wisely use our tax dollars instead of building a new one. That's why, looking forward, I want to continue to build on that strategic plan. That's the roadmap we wrote, and that's the roadmap I want to see implemented. Thank you.
Same question for Ms. Guy. What's your vision for the future of Bismarck?
My vision for the future of Bismarck is a really vibrant city where, that has its own unique civic personality, and I think that that grows out of having a really unique downtown area. We have a downtown area sub-plan that I think is really a great start. We have marvelous restaurants and shops right now. We need to add to that with some park area. We need a downtown arts center. And we have this marvelous triangle between downtown, the civic center, and Kirkwood Mall. So, if you add a world-class hotel in there and follow through with that plan, I think that it would go a long ways towards attracting all of those people we want to come and live and work here.
We'll begin a new question with Mrs. Miller, and this is something that I think all the candidates have alluded to, and that relates to communication, particularly with your constituents. As a city commissioner, how would you stay in touch with the needs and wishes of the citizens of Bismarck?
If I were elected to the city commission, I would stay in touch with my citizens just simply by talking to them. I talk to people every day. I work in the schools, I talk to teachers, I talk to parents. And, I mean, you can walk around the street, go through parks, and just randomly talk to people and ask them, hey, how's it going? You know, how's life? How do you like things around here? Do you think of anything you can improve with? I've talked to firemen, I've talked to policemen, I've asked them what their biggest concerns are, because I want to know. I don't want anything from anybody other than to know what bothers you and how I can fix it and what your ideas are, and that's, I want to know. Public hearings, residents, you tell me you don't want something in your area and its residential area, then fine. It's your house, you're a property owner, you should have a say. And I just want to listen to people. That's it. Thank you.
Same question, Mr. Philp.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question for me, please?
As a city commissioner, how would you stay in touch with the needs and wishes of the citizens of Bismarck?
Thank you. One of the things that I've noticed, I alluded to special interests driving the agenda earlier, and I don't mean that they're malicious or that they have ill will toward the city. I don't mean that at all when I say special interests. They have staff, they even have paid employees that can stay on top of the issues that are currently before the city and represent their organizations before the city. The residents don't have that same type of representation. So, I would propose something as simple as the Bismarck Area Residents Association, something like that, a simple website that has information that both the city commissioners can work through to get information out to the citizens of Bismarck and get feedback that way from them, and have leaders in the community that are also in front of the city.
And Mr. Poole.
Communications is a lot more complicated now than it has been historically, but it's also an opportunity to use a lot of other avenues of communication that haven't been heavily used in the past. I think Facebook, email, being accessible by phone are the sort of the start as a commissioner. You need to be accessible through whatever mechanism your constituents are comfortable communicating through. And second is just plain be accessible. Listen to all, not just your friends, and pay particular attention to those with whom you have a disagreement in terms of where the city's going. Their opinions are valid as well. You might actually find that you learned something, which is always a good thing. And then you also need to be very accessible to the media and all forms of the media, and make yourself very accessible and very out there in terms of visiting, working with, talking to, speaking to community groups over relevant issues. But at the time that you take those opportunities to talk to those groups, you should also take the time and opportunity to listen to what they have to say as well.
And now, beginning with Mr. Marquart, I'd like to propose a question that was provided by tonight's audience. The question reads, "How would you reconcile people who choose to live outside city limits because property taxes are lower, yet they want and request and deserve good schools, parks, library, et cetera, all of which are funded by these taxes?"
First of all, I'm just going to answer that question that you had prior to. My phone number is 226-5166, and my email address is on the Bismarck Public Schools website. One thing, when you're in public service, you have to be available to the public. When I, when we had, one of our major issues that we had was the boundary issues, and many of you will understand that. When I got done with my phone, I kept everyone on there and had read every single one of them and their concerns, and the ones that were major concerns were they needed to have a little bit more discussion points with, I called them personally myself, but you have to be available to be out there in the public. I was there. When I got done, I erased 270-some, and that was just half of them. Now for your question, as far as people outside the city limits. There's a lot of taxation without representation. There's a lot of people outside the city that own land in city that do pay taxes, so we have to, as far as on the school side, we have to provide school for those people.
And now, Ms. Baden-Hopp.
One of the things I've done while running for city commission is I've taken time to meet with some of the city staff and taken time to learn about how things are funded and the various funding streams we have here within the city of Bismarck. And I'm very aware that property taxes here fund our public safety efforts. So, I know that property taxes are a concern as far as affordable housing, but I also would encourage those people in the county and also over in Mandan and Morton County to look at the benefits that they do currently receive, you know, from what those of us in Bismarck are paying for. I think it was a great effort that the new jail that's being proposed, they're proposing a sales tax increase as opposed to a property tax to fund that. I think that more evenly distributes things. But I just, I would say that we want to be good citizens, we want to be good neighbors, and I think it's important to provide an excellent community that those folks surrounding us can enjoy.
Same question, Mr. Motzenbacher.
Thank you. First of all, you know, the city and county really, especially when we're growing as fast as we are right now, really need to work together. And even more importantly, they need to listen to the citizens. You know, we really need to be conscious of these people, like, you know, was previously said, that can't vote for the people that are on the city commission that live out in the county. However, you know, to say that they don't pay taxes in the city isn't completely true. You know, most of them are employed in the city, so they're going to pay income taxes. Most of them shop in the city, so they're going to pay sales taxes. Property taxes, of course, are a different thing. You know, and the people outside the city limits also need to realize, though, that Bismarck can't grow up, it has to grow out. But we need to be conscious of that as city commissioners also, to realize that, you know, these people didn't build with the plan that they are going to get annexed or going to be, you know, robbed of any of their freedom that they have out, you know, in the extraterritorial zone especially. But we need to work together with them so everyone can be happy.
And now, a new question, also provided by the viewers this evening for Commissioner Axfig. Again, a reminder to those who are in the audience, please fill out the cards at your seats. Those who are watching on TV tonight, please call 355-1312 during our program tonight, May 21st. So, Commissioner Axfig, do you, as a commission candidate, support the concept of an open microphone at each commission meeting?
Thank you, Dot, for the question, and thank you to the individual in the audience that submitted the question as well. I think we have public hearings and public input for a reason, and we always take time. Every instance I've had on the commission where there were times when people were coming back up to the microphone to make sure that we have input. We always hold public input meetings outside when we did the strategic planning process, for instance, the land use plan, the downtown master plan. There are always public input sessions for individuals to offer that public input and do so. One of the things that we've continued to have thoughts about and at least discussions with staff about, that I've had discussions with staff about, is how do we make sure that if someone has something they want to get on the agenda, they do? And maybe an open microphone is the answer.
And Ms. Guy, same question. Do you, as a commission candidate, support the concept of an open microphone at each commission meeting?
Well, I think there is quite an open microphone as it stands now. I've been to lots of the city commission meetings lately, and there are numerous citizens that stop in and comment on issues, let the commissioners know how they're feeling. I would also, in order to increase communication with our citizens, I would advocate having several town hall-style meetings each year so that it's not a formal hearing, it's not a meeting or a commission meeting, it's an opportunity for residents to ask questions, toss out ideas, make proposals, and have a real conversation with the city commission.
And Mrs. Miller.
Personally, I think open mic is great. People should have the option to come in and also give commissioners a way to keep in touch with the citizens in Bismarck. Like Axfig said, we do have, you know, the option for public hearings. However, I think that, you know, if it's just going to stay in the option of a public hearing, not everything on the agenda-
hearing, not everything on the agenda gets discussed by the public, then notifications of meetings, the radius needs to be wider. I think right now the city is at 500 feet from a place of, like, we'll say, for example, like rezoning, when I know, like, the county is a lot further than that. So maybe not all residents are informed of a public hearing or a public meeting, and if we're going to give people the option to come speak about it, they should know and have greater option to know more communication, that there is something happening that they can come in and talk, and we'll be willing to listen to them.
And we'll begin with a new question for Mr. Philp. The city of Bismarck has accepted a plan for downtown Bismarck that envisions the development of an underpass, plaza, and other urban features. How would you like the city to deal with downtown development moving forward?
Thank you, Dot. If I could, going back to the prior question with open mic first, absolutely, we have to have open mics for the meetings. It was the impetus for my being in this chair tonight, having the opportunity to not only help represent our neighborhood on a couple of issues, but to speak my mind and have the commissioners listen and represent me and others as well. It goes back, obviously, to the idea of listening, the concept of listening, and the representation that the commissioners would take from hearing from the public, obviously. For the sub-area plan that you spoke about, I guess the best way that I would look at addressing that is, again, laying it out before the public, open meetings, and getting their feedback for paying for the infrastructure, for example.
And now, Mr. Poole.
I think vision is one thing, and it's a grandiose vision for downtown. It would make an amazing downtown area that would be probably more extravagant than many downtown areas in destination cities that I've seen in the past. But we always have to be cognizant of the fact that it's not the commission's money. It's, the vision has to be paid for at some point and be seen by the taxpayers and the public as worth that additional investment. The public needs to understand that there's a vision for these things, but that vision has to fall within a budget and also a prioritization process. There are a lot of things that are going to have to be juggled with this city in the future, especially as we're dealing with future growth and development. So anything that we do see in terms of a vision for downtown has to be prioritized also within that larger framework of funding that includes growth and includes things like public safety.
And same question for Mr. Markwart. How would you like the city to deal with downtown development moving forward?
Basically, communication and how we're going to fund it. And that's something that we're going to have to discuss as a commission on different alternatives to be able to fund some of those vision. Are we doing it the right way? And we do have to prioritize. One thing with the school district, we've got a great big plan of what we want to do, but can we do everything that's on there? No. Like Mr. Poole said, you have to prioritize and be able to fund, you know, what you can. But there's going to have to be communication with the public. What do they want down there, and how is it going to be paid for?
And Ms. Badenhaupt, a new question supplied by the audience tonight. Which method do you support for financing the infrastructure growth for the expanded land use for city expansion?
The funding for infrastructure is something that I talked about at the last forum I attended, and I believe, like I mentioned earlier, we cannot rely on federal dollars, which is how we have traditionally funded that here in Bismarck. So I have stated publicly, both in the profiles published by the chamber and in interviews other places, that I believe we should look at public-private partnerships. And I think there are a lot of communities across America that have come up with some creative ways to do various funding for such projects, and I think we should start trying to be a little more creative, because I think we will need to address that. As far as your last question on downtown, I think we have a fabulous downtown. One of the reasons I decided to run for this office is that I have lived in communities that were growing at the pace Bismarck is growing. And I lived in a particular community that lost their downtown because they focused solely on all of their outer growth in the community. So I'm very excited that Bismarck has a focus on their downtown, and I would expect us to continue to look at that and support that as a commission.
And Mr. Machenbacher.
Thank you. To address this question, this really needs to be a collaborative effort between developers and city government to get this done correctly. I really believe that each new neighborhood that is brought into Bismarck here should be able to support itself. And what I'm saying by that is, you know, somebody who lives down on, you know, South 7th Street or whatever shouldn't have to be paying for streetlights for someone up in Boulder Ridge or something, you know, something like that. Each neighborhood should be, you know, able to, the tax dollars collected there should be able to go towards that neighborhood. And I also want to just step back to the question about downtown. It's kind of my specialty, is I've been working in that area for the past 23 years, but I'm really supportive of the new plan that's put out there. It's really a step in the right direction. And something that I've explained to several people as I've been walking around town is that the tax dollars that are collected from the improvements down at the Civic Center and such, such as people shopping or, you know, going out to eat or staying in hotels, those are then put into the city coffers, which then can reduce your property taxes. Red flagged again.
And now, Commissioner Axfig.
Thanks, Dot. I've called for a task force to be put together to look at infrastructure investments. During my tenure on the city commission, the largest complaint I've heard over and over again is about special assessments and how we generally fund these infrastructure improvements today. And so I think we need to take a look at, how do other communities do it? And find a solution that fits for Bismarck, much like we did with the neighborhood park ordinance and other things. I want to go back to the communication issue, and I think that's a really valuable and an important part of being a commissioner. It's why I've led the way in terms of pushing the city to get out on Facebook, Twitter. It's why every time you want to contact a commissioner, you can go to bismarck.org. You can email all the commissioners at once and make sure we all get it. During my tenure, I've made it a priority in every instance possible that within 24 hours of me receiving a message, they either get an email or a phone call back from me. Sometimes it's, hey, I need to look into this, and I'll follow up. But I've always made it a priority to get back to that. Lastly, on the downtown plan, we need to move forward with it, and we need to do so by looking at all of our options. What is there out there? There might be a business improvement district. There might be a need for additional private revenue as well.
And now, back to Ms. Guy. Another question supplied by this evening's audience. What is the biggest change you believe is needed on the Bismarck City Commission?
Well, I don't know if it's so much of a change. Well, yeah, I do. According to our demographics, women comprise about 51% of our population here in Bismarck, and I think it's really important that we have more women represented on the commission. So currently, our only female city commissioner is not running for reelection, so I think it's important that we elect another woman. And I think it's important that we elect yet another woman in a couple of years. So I would say that would be the biggest change, would be gender balance.
Same question for Mrs. Miller.
I kind of have to agree with Nancy on that one. I do think there needs to be a balance, but I also think that the commission could use a fresher look, get a little fresh minds in there, maybe, you know, people who haven't been doing this for a long time. You know, sometimes it can just become redundant, and you go through the motions, and putting in a fresh mind, and fresh, new ideas never hurt anybody. And, you know, I mean, fresh, new ideas always sponsor the greatest ideas throughout the entire history of everywhere. It's always been new ideas that have paved the way, and I think that's what the commission needs to do.
And Mr. Philp, again, what is the biggest change you believe is needed on the Bismarck City Commission?
It's a great question. Thank you. Biggest change, obviously, yes, we are growing. As long as the economy in North Dakota continues to roar along, we're going to see growth here in Bismarck. I think for the commission as a whole, obviously, it's an at-large type of thing. I would like to consider conversation and somewhere it be proposed that we look at wards. And I'm not saying that we would change to a larger commission by any stretch of the imagination, but we could still keep it with four plus the mayor as the five seats entirely, but with wards, and how you would work that, cut the city up into a pie, maybe eight slices, so that the four commissioners have two wards and the mayor is at large. And then from there, it pushes accountability to each commissioner to be out with the public, and that accountability is obviously there.
And now, Mr. Poole, a new question. What do you think is the most effective way to provide property tax relief?
That's a long-term government question. It happens at all levels of government when you're talking about how much we pay for the goods and services that are provided. The important things to me in providing tax relief are, I'm an economist, I love efficiency. To me, it's going back, looking at the various processes. Is our contracting process a process that really nets the best value to the public on the dollars that are spent in how we approach bidding contracts or taking contracts back to the individual that scoped it as opposed to an open bidding process? I think that as we look for efficiencies and redundancies between city and county government, that if we work together as various entities in terms of levels of government, there are opportunities to cost share and move towards a common vision for some of the things that we're paying for. And then I think there are also opportunities that as a prosperous state, there is oil impact money available. We just need to identify and work with our state legislators when oil impact actually overlaps the city, and that we take the opportunity to encourage them to participate with oil revenue sharing.
And now, Mr. Markwart.
I would basically agree with what Mr. Poole had said. I mean, it's basically, we need to find our efficiencies, but we also, with a growing city, we have to make sure that some of it is streamlined where we can. But in the city planning and be able to get our infrastructure set up, it's going to cost money. Where is that money coming from? And like Mr. Poole said, we have to take a look at all options that are on the table. We have to visit with our community and see what they want. But also on the school board, we were able to give tax money back to the public. So I've done that.
And same question for Ms. Badenhaupt. What do you think is the most effective way to provide property tax relief?
I've already mentioned this evening that I've looked at some of the ways we fund things here in Bismarck, and I've met with some of the city staff. And I also recognized earlier that we're looking at using a sales tax proposal as a measure on the ballot June 10th to fund the new jail. That's one step in a direction of looking at alternate ways to fund what property taxes fund here in Bismarck. So I think it's worth evaluating, you know, how do we currently fund things? What kind of money do we currently have available to us? Do we need, you know, if housing prices are increasing, that's also increasing property tax revenue, or property tax revenues. So we could potentially reduce them as property values go up if our budget is intact. And then I also think that the oil impact issue is a very serious one. The state does have oil revenue, and we are impacted by it, and it's a matter of identifying the ways we're impacted and helping the state understand how they can help us deal with that.
And now, again, a new question, this one posed to Mr. Machenbacher. We've talked about property tax relief, so in essence, leaving more money with our constituents. Another way to give them more money is to encourage higher wage salaries in our community. This next question reads, "What are your ideas for attracting businesses that pay living wage salaries?"
Thank you. I'll get that right yet. Actually, this is something that I've been addressing at a statewide level in addition to Bismarck for the past several months. Our business is, you know, greatly affected by the wage increases. That has just naturally happened because of the growth. I think the best government is a non-intrusive government. And I think some of the best things we could do is provide low taxes for people to come in and to try to start a business. And, you know, some of these bigger companies that have come in the past have said that the reasons, some of the reasons they've come here is because these families can come to Bismarck and not, you know, get killed on taxes like they do in some bigger cities like Chicago or Los Angeles or wherever, and they can enjoy the benefits of smaller community. So I think we would just, like I said, a non-intrusive government, I think, would be the best government, and I think that's how we should attract families.
Commissioner Axfig.
Thanks, Dot. Attracting higher wage salaries is about growing your own. That's why I've supported efforts like the Idea Center, working with BMDA and others to, how do we create the destination place where someone wants to start their business here and grow it? How do we make the next Microsoft happen in Bismarck? How do we make the next KLJ here in Bismarck? How do we create that place where young talent wants to be? That's the reason I've been a supporter of our downtown efforts and continuing to build that place, that hip area where young professionals want to hang out at night. Four years ago, it was just starting to come along. If you go down there tonight, and tonight's a great example because of what's happening with our energy boom, it's a happening place. It's busy and it's jam-packed. And that's because we're starting to create that destination place where people want to live, and that's where the companies are going to want to be because they know the talent's there. And if you look at those areas of the country that are finding that success, it's because they've created that destination place.
And Ms. Guy. Same question for Ms. Guy. What are your ideas for attracting businesses that pay living wage salaries?
Well, you know, having or maintaining a diverse economy in our area is really important because if we want to make sure we don't allow the, our energy boom to sort of overtake everything in town. We know that that'll be with us for a long time, but it won't be with us forever. So in order to attract these other companies, maintain our, you know, manufacturing economy, the value-added agriculture technology, and some service businesses, we need to go back to this idea of creating our civic personality, making Bismarck that place that people want to live at, that people want to move to, they want to move their business here, they want to come here and start their business. And we can do that by pursuing our downtown plan and working on the affordable housing and supporting efforts from the chamber and the BMDA in their recruiting.
Now, we've talked about taxes, property taxes, in a roundabout way, income taxes, and now we're going to move on to sales tax. The next question for Mrs. Miller. What are your priorities for the uses of sales tax?
Sales tax, everybody loves that tax. Use of sales tax, I think, can go towards paying for things we need, like fixing our roads. Our roads are one thing in this town that being somebody who rides on the back of a motorcycle is not fun. Potholes are not nice. I think sales tax could help pay for that. Increasing sales tax, it's a tough issue. I think any increase in taxes whatsoever, be it property, income, any tax period, needs to be considered with the consumer in mind. And if we want to negate where sales taxes goes, why don't we ask our residents where they'd like the sales taxes to go? If we're going to increase them, they should have a say where they get paid for.
Same question now for Mr. Philp.
Thank you, Dot. If I could address just the first question prior about attracting businesses, I had the opportunity last Friday to take a young lady to the Bismarck Airport. She's from Kansas City, and she works for the DOT at the federal level here in Bismarck. She's been here for a year. And she shared with me that she would tell anybody her age, and I would put her in her mid-20s, that Bismarck is a place to come to. And the reason being is, is that the people here are nice, she said, and it's a safe community. So keeping that in mind, if we could attract entrepreneurs to come to Bismarck, and I realize that that would take some working with the state, but some tech companies, some startup companies like that, to attract some of these young professionals and share what Bismarck has to offer. As far as priorities with sales tax, I agree. Fix the roads first as part of the infrastructure. The roads are in bad shape, and I realize we're coming out of the winter season.
And now, Mr. Poole. What are your priorities for the use of sales tax?
I'm going to go back to the previous question, which is the little wage salaries. I think one of the ways that we address that is through value-added human capital, and I think that's a public-private partnership with Bismarck State College, University of Mary, UND, North Dakota State University, the other institutions that add value to individuals as wage earners. I think North Dakota is well-known for having a very good education system. We need to continue to support that. Regarding sales taxes, we need to remember that what a sales tax does is it shifts the burden of the cost outside of our community to those that are external to our community or those that are driving in. So there's still impacts on our roads when people from the outside come into our community, use that infrastructure, those resources. So it shifts that burden partly onto them as well. And the other part of it is remembering that sustainability has to be a part of the public discourse on any new investment or spending that we do. discourse on any new investment or spending that we do that's sales tax-based, because the expectation is that sales taxes will eventually sunset. If we don't have a plan for sustainable funding of that infrastructure, then it's going to be a problem in the future.
And now, before we move on to the next question, I would like to, again, invite in-house audience members to submit their questions using the index cards provided by our volunteers. Also, those viewing on television tonight can call 355-1312 during our forum today, which is May 21st. And now with Mr. Markwart, a question supplied by our audience this evening. And this alludes to a reference that Mrs. Miller made previously when it comes to roads and traffic patterns. As a commissioner, what will you do to contribute to solving the traffic flow problems, particularly Washington Street?
That's a very good question. Thanks for sending that. We're working with issues on North Washington Street with a new elementary school going up there. So I think we need to stay in touch with our roads department and visit with that. But with anything, we, it has to be paid for somehow, some way. So we have to make sure we communicate in how we want our infrastructure designed, set up, and built. And that's one thing, even going north farther, we have to decide, and we have, going door-to-door, I mean, that's the best way to get some of the information from our public. I've got different areas on the south side. I've got a gentleman that doesn't want to pay for anything on the north side. But we have to keep in mind, we're a large community, and we're growing. And to be able to have our roads flow like Washington, Divide, and the city is working on extending Divide, and also with Sentry, there's things that we need to make sure that we keep in mind as far as to be able to flow, to get emergency vehicles here, there, and everywhere.
And now, Ms. Badenhop.
Traffic flow is one of the biggest reasons I decided to run for city commission. I mentioned previously that I've lived in other communities growing like Bismarck, and I have seen the long-term impacts of decisions made by local government, particularly traffic impact. So I believe the commission, you know, as a commissioner, it's important to very thoughtfully look at what's happening with business development, how are neighborhoods being laid out, what's the housing density, where's the housing density going? And by thoughtfully considering the long-term impact of decisions the commission makes, we can have a better traffic layout going forward in the future. I am aware, there are a lot of concerns about Washington Street. There are a lot of concerns that there aren't sidewalks for the children that are going to be walking to school in the fall. And I know that that's an area of concern. It's also related to the funding needs and the infrastructure funding needs. And I believe, as I said, that that's the single most important thing that the commission should look at.
And now, Mr. Machenbacher.
I'd like to actually address this question and the last one, if I can. Going back to the sales tax one, I really believe an increasing population along with a good combination of higher-paying jobs is going to increase sales tax revenues. And I really believe that increased revenues in sales tax really could be used to, you know, slow down the burden of property taxes. Secondly, with the Washington Street and traffic, you know, Washington Street really is the only true north-south route that connects farthest-south area of Bismarck to the farthest-north area of Bismarck. And I think anything new, of course, going north and south on Washington really needs to be expanded and planned for the future. But this also goes, there's other streets besides Washington Street. You know, we need to plan 43rd Street, Divide, I know they're working on Divide right now, but we need to look east and west, north and south, and, you know, maybe one way is another answer. Maybe you have another one way or two. But as the city is growing north, let's plan for the future and build it for the future.
And now, Commissioner Axvig. A lot of the questions this evening really have been motivated by the growth we're experiencing as a community, and this question continues on that path. As Bismarck grows, our population is becoming more culturally diverse. What are your ideas to promote a welcoming attitude toward new cultures?
The population growth we're seeing is wonderful, and I think the fact that we're seeing new cultures come into our community and new citizens, starting and trying to live the American dream here is a great thing. I think we've done, and we need to continue to build on, our efforts with our Human Rights Committee, excuse me, Human Rights Committee that looks at some of those things. We've put together a diversity committee, we hold diversity days and some of those things. But the other thing I think we need to do is, if we start seeing substantial populations, one of the things we need to work more closely with is UTTC and our friends in the Native American community about bringing them in, about how we ensure that Bismarck, their home, is right for them as well. And so continuing that discussion and that communication and collaboration, and if people have ideas, I'd love to hear them. We're always looking for ways to make sure that we get the best perspective on the commission.
And Ms. Guy.
You know, I would agree with Commissioner Axvig's emphasis on the Human Relations Commission and the Diversity Commission. Another way to bring people together is through the arts. And I think having a central arts center that brings all of our arts groups in town under one roof through perhaps an organization like Dakota West Arts Council would do a lot towards welcoming folks, newcomers to Bismarck from different cultures.
And Mrs. Miller.
Well, I know new cultures is kind of a new thing in Bismarck. When I was younger, I didn't, I didn't live in Bismarck when I was younger. I actually lived in Iowa, and I grew up in a town full of culture. My classroom was full of different colors, and it was beautiful. And I think really what needs to be done is just awareness that everybody's welcome here, it doesn't matter who you are. You're welcome. We'll listen to you, we'll talk to you, we're going to embrace your culture because it's beautiful. Culture is good. It's good for your education, it's good for you as a human being, it's good for your attitudes. I work with, I work in the schools, I'm an ELL aide. I work with kids who have English as a second language, and I love it. It is the best job I've ever had, and those kids brighten my day every day. And I think it's just letting people know that it's okay that they come here, and we're going to welcome them, we're going to embrace them, and we're going to, you know, we're going to help them out and do things to make people aware of their culture and understand it.
Now, a new question again, beginning with Mr. Philp. Kind of continuing on with culture and experiences in the community, please share with our viewers and audience today how the arts fit into your vision for the future of Bismarck.
Great question. To be perfectly honest, I guess I haven't thought about it in that regard. My wife is an artist, so I would turn to her, and I would ask her that very same question and get her perspective on that. As far as other artists that I've met in the community, they're talented, they have great ideas. And when it comes to breaching the cultural differences, art would be one way that we could and probably should use the individuals that have those talents to teach us about the cultural differences, about different diversity and the groups coming into Bismarck.
And now, Mr. Poole.
Well, I first want to recognize that Bismarck is a regional hub for the arts, between Bismarck Arts and Galleries Association, the Symphony, the Symphony League. I mean, there are a multitude of organizations in the city that are vibrant and add to our community and our culture as it is. I think arts themselves, they expand our experience, they challenge our perspectives, and they also become shared experiences. So in terms of where the arts belong in our community, I think they're already embedded. They're already ingrained in part of who and what we are.
That's a topic we get all the time on the school board, and we're working with a lot of those same groups that Mr. Poole's working with. And we see that when students are enrolled or engage in the arts programs, whatever that may be, it may be music, it may be our drafting class that we built up, the Career Academy. You know, we embrace that because it brings out the best in our students, but it brings out the best in the people in our community. And I think the communication side of that is, those programs need to get out there so that we know what's going on, and we can embrace those a lot, a lot easier. And like Micah had said, the school district, we've seen a lot of the culture come to the district, and we've had to be able to add staff to be able to handle that. But we embrace them and help them with their education because they don't know how to speak English, as sometimes I don't as well either, and it's my native language.
And now, Ms. Badenhop. A new question. What do you see as the city of Bismarck's role in promoting active and healthy lifestyles?
I think the role of a city in promoting that is to provide opportunities for people to have an active lifestyle. I think Bismarck already does a great job at that. We have a lot of sports complexes around town, we have an excellent system of trails around town. So I think it would be a matter of ensuring that as the city grows, that we are continuing to provide those facilities in accessible areas for the new growth and the new neighborhoods that are coming to town.
Mr. Machenbacher.
Thanks. I, kind of on the same idea what Kim just said, you know, there's, there can be a role by city government to help provide some of this stuff. You know, arts and sciences are one. You know, softball and baseball, diamonds, fantastic, I mean, there's thousands of people involved in these sports activities. Parks for our families to gather in, and, you know, walking trails, you know, there's nothing, you know, my family is one of them that just loves these things. It's just so peaceful to, you know, be out on a nice night like tonight, you know, out walking the trails, fishing along the river. I mean, there's just stuff like this that a city can provide. And, you know, it needs to be provided so, you know, the, sorry, I go back here. It also needs to be safely provided, meaning that, you know, we have to make sure that everything that we have is safe for the kids to use. And I think that's about it.
And now, Commissioner Axvig.
Well, contrary to popular belief, Dot, I did not run here tonight. I did that this morning. Many of you know that I'm an active runner and have spent hours on the trails and sidewalks and streets of Bismarck with my running buddy, Ollie, and done that. And so I believe Bismarck's role in promoting health is twofold. One, it's in public health and working with our partners at Bismarck Burley Public Health, as well as the Go Bismarck Mandan Coalition and others to provide those opportunities. But the real role we have is in planning. And that's why when people ask me, why did we promote the neighborhood park ordinance at the city level? It's because we're the ones who do the planning of where new developments will go, how they will look, what they will be structured like. And so that's why we pushed for, passed, and now we'll have neighborhood parks in all of our neighborhoods, because that's where families go to recreate, that's where neighbors go to meet and have some of the conversations that people have talked about before. And by the way, they add economic value to those neighborhoods as well.
Now, Ms. Guy, Commissioner Axvig provided an excellent segue into the next question, which was supplied by this evening's audience. How would you address runners on the road impacting traffic safety?
Do you want me to take that one, Nancy?
Please do. You know, honestly, I didn't know that that was a problem. I have not, in my driving back and forth to Mandan every day to work and driving around town, I haven't run into that difficulty. Actually, I think that would be a public safety issue you'd probably want to address with, you know, public service announcements and getting the information out to the public, and then probably enforcing with the police department. It really would be quite awful if we lost a runner or two because they were running in the street.
Mrs. Miller.
Like Nancy said, I haven't really run into too many runners on the street. However, I do live on an avenue, so I do have bikers and stuff that are, you know, right in the street. I don't know. But when I was a kid, I was told to ride on the sidewalk to avoid vehicles and park cars and running into parked cars, stuff like that. I would say, you know, if you're going to run on the street for one, as a runner, you have to take your own safety precautions, as I'm sure you do. You know, where if you're going to be out at night, you got to wear some reflectors. But like she said, public safety, you know, maybe get it out there that, hey, this is a high-traffic running spot, so you need to keep your eyes open. But also, I think it has to do with the runners as well. I mean, you got to learn common sense, you don't want to weave in and out of parked cars because, well, you might get run over, right? So I think it should go to public safety and I just watch out, I guess.
And Mr. Philp.
I would agree. Strongly encourage runners to use other means than the road beds, the walking trails, the parks, the sidewalks, along the river bottom. I know that there's ample room in that area. And back to cultural differences, one of the things that I think we overlook is, when new people come into the community, they're a great resource to seek out how things are done in communities that they came out of. Perfect example is addressing issues with bikers and whatnot on the public streets. And I know we have the Share the Road program here, so that is an awareness for automobile drivers. Another thing with cultural differences, obviously, is fear and misunderstanding, and they kind of go hand in hand, one drives the other. I have a good friend, his name, I'll call him Bob, who reaches out to the Native American community through his ministry. So those are opportunities that I think the city could take a look at.
And now, Mr. Poole, a new question, again, supplied by this evening's audience, related to health. How do you feel about the smoke-free ordinances?
The smoke-free ordinances are a net savings to our society. It's been shown in many academic studies over and over again that have been peer-reviewed by some of the best statisticians and scientists out there, that if you reduce smoking, you reduce the number of health incidents associated with cardiovascular disease, pulmonary diseases, and other things, and the multitude of cancers that happen as a result of them, that when you look at the net benefits to society, where society has to pay for part of the healthcare costs to address the issues associated with smoking, the net return is to the public, that it costs you money when somebody else incurs disease or medical costs associated with smoking, and that includes your own private insurance premiums are driven also by that. I'd like to go back to the runners and traffic safety issue, I can't help myself, but for the runners, if they don't have blinkers, please use hand signals. But on a more serious note, I think the arterial and collector street plan that's out there is going to help an awful lot with developing avenues for them to be more safe in their traversing of the city.
Mr. Markwart.
Question again.
The question was, how do you feel about the smoke-free ordinance?
I like it. I don't smoke, and if there was, I mean, we don't have to worry about it anymore, but the bars that were, or wherever that had smoking, we could choose not to partake in any of that. I do believe, though, that as a business owner, you should have that right to be able to provide that opportunity. I do know that some of the places now have different smoking areas outside, so. Preferably myself, I don't smoke. I didn't frequent areas that did offer smoking, and like Mr. Poole said, there's definitely, and bless you, definitely a cost factor to that, and it does benefit our insurance. Thank you.
Ms. Badenhop, same question.
I, I mean, this is an issue from the past, basically, because it was already decided by the commission. I am a non-smoker, and it is more enjoyable for me to be in a restaurant or a business when there's no smoking. I also agree that businesses should have the freedom to make that decision for themselves. So I think that most business owners are inclined to take actions that will increase their business and give them more revenue. So that's my general feeling on it, but I do enjoy going to places that don't have smoking.
And now, Mr. Machenbacher. Again, a question from our audience, and this comes back to the discussion we've hosted previously regarding downtown Bismarck. The question reads, the downtown project appears to be developed to draw visitors to Bismarck. How does the project benefit local residents who will not be able to use the parks and outdoor green areas nine months of the year?
Good question. I've looked at the plan, and I would guess, I think I maybe disagree, I know one of the things that I did see, you know, we only get three months of summer, one of the things that I saw on this plan was an outdoor skating rink where Fiesta Villa was at, and I believe I also saw a concrete park in there. So, I mean, there's other things that can be done down there. And yes, I think part of this is geared towards bringing in people from out of the city. However, you know, one of the things, like I kind of mentioned before, is that when you attract people from outside the city, these people come in and they spend money in your city. And... come in and they spend money in your city. And that way, it really lessens the burden on our own citizens of the taxes that are needed to run a city. If I could just really quick go back to the smoke-free ordinance one, our business is smoke-free. We chose to go smoke-free on our own. We did it for the health and safety of our guests and our employees. However, I agreed with these two. I, I think if you have a group of people that want to go out and smoke in a bar or whatever, let them go do it. I'll stay away from it.
Commissioner Axvig.
Remind me of the question, Dot.
The question was, in regards to the downtown projects, how does that project benefit local residents who won't be able to use the space nine months of the year?
Thank you. So if you look at what is designed in the downtown project, in the downtown plan, most of it is for year-round use. We're a hardy people in Bismarck. I know many people who exercise outside year-round. They attend our open skating rinks that are outside year-round. And Mike's right, that there is a downtown skating rink planned for the Fiesta Villa parking lot if that were to happen. I think the, the bigger question is, how won't it be used? And when will it be empty? Because right now, we don't have a town square. I can tell you, there's interest from Urban Harvest and from others about getting some of those places in place, because they, they're running out of space on the streets now. I want to go back to the runner's safety thing. And the reason that I hold the sidewalk portfolio and am such a staunch supporter of sidewalks is exactly that, is there are areas of town where you cannot get from point A to point B without having to step on the road. And I don't think that's right. I think that's an accessibility issue. I think it's a safety issue, and that's why I worked on that during my term on the commission.
Ms. Guy, same question.
I'm glad you didn't change. I'm glad you didn't change questions. One of the things I think is so exciting about downtown is the opportunity to use it all year round. The, the skating rink, I, I just think is a stroke of genius. It's green space in the summertime and a skating rink in the wintertime. You know, we could look at holding outdoor winter markets. You know, we're not 25 below nine months out of the year. There are events at the civic center, restaurants and shops downtown, offices where, you know, you go to conduct business. And, you know, we can look at increasing our residential options downtown as well. So I really think that it's going to be a downtown for Bismarck, not just visitors.
And Mrs. Miller, a question provided by tonight's audience relating to affordable housing. First, if you would, share with us your definition of affordable housing, and then also answer how you would increase affordable housing options for young professionals who want to come into the community.
My definition of affordable housing is a place where a family, being middle-class, lower-class, can come in and get a nice home and not have to scrape by to live there. You shouldn't have to do that. You shouldn't have to work to live. You should be able to have a little extra playing money around. I am all in favor of keeping money in people's pockets. You know, we, how can you build for your future if you don't have the money to do so? You know, if you're constantly shelling out and you don't have any money, you can't save for college for your children. You can't save for retirement. And in order to make affordable housing, property taxes need to go down. But every action has a reaction. So in order for that to happen, it would have to be done with the utmost care and complete consideration of how it would affect the consumer both now and further on down the road, and make sure it's not going to come back and bite them.
Mr. Phil, same question. Your definition of affordable housing and what you would do to create affordable housing for young professionals interested in our community?
Thank you, thank you. My definition comes from each individual's budget would define what is affordable for the individual. And again, it goes back to being able to reach that target. I didn't purchase my first home until I was 38 years old, for example. And along those lines, when it comes to affordability, if you're looking for help, many of the homes around Bismarck have apartments attached to the single-family homes. So here, you're looking at the opportunity to not only provide an affordable rental to someone that needs that, but also the rental income to lower the cost of an individual's mortgage so that they're able to get into a home sooner. And from that standpoint, I think that I would encourage and propose that the city begin discussing using developers and builders to look at entire subdivisions where many of the homes have that type of housing.
Mr. Poole.
I think affordable housing is more closely defined as, as accessible rental housing as opposed to home ownership. And regards to young professionals and affordable housing for young professionals, I don't think young professionals are the people that I'm worried about when I'm talking about affordable housing. Young professionals, by definition, would have a skill set that brings higher value added, so they should be somewhere closer to the median income or above. And that's not, I think, the target group for affordable housing projects. I think the affordable housing projects need to be something that is in partnership or is in a part of the, the planning zoning ordinances that are associated with development and build-out, so that if you are doing a, a townhouse development or other high-density type development, that you would be able to get some sort of lenience on some of the costs of development associated with the public sector for offering a certain number of those units at an affordable housing price. And affordable housing, to me, is you still have enough money to pay your utilities and feed your family afterwards.
And now Mr. Markwart. This is our final question of the evening, before we afford each of you the opportunity to provide some closing remarks. Again, thank you to our audience for supplying us with some wonderful questions to pose to the candidates this evening. This, again, the final question from tonight's audience. So, Mr. Markwart, what is the guiding principle by which you live your life?
Guiding principle by how I live my life? You know what, when people ask me why I ran for the school district, I said, you know, where else can I have as much influence on a young person as I did? I, I wasn't certified to be a teacher, by all means, but I can give the teachers the tools. Our students in the district are some of the top students in the country. Reason being, that makes me very proud, is because we're able to do those tools. If I make a decision on the school district, and it's the wrong decision, I can goof up some little person's life for the rest of their life. That's a huge burden on a person's shoulders when you think about it. When you actually sit down and think, the decisions that you make can affect that person forever. So when I make my decisions, I'm honest with it. I said, how is it going to help or influence? And I got to stop.
Ms. Baden-Hop.
I'd first like to address the question about the downtown project, which was a couple of questions ago. We did not discuss yet the two biggest year-round benefits of that project, which would be a quiet rail and an underpass, which would give additional traffic relief downtown. So I, when I've reviewed that plan, I don't view it as something just to attract people to visit. I think it does both, attract people to visit, which brings additional revenue, and I think it enhances the day-to-day lives of those people who live in town and in the surrounding areas. I know I live, you know, 11 blocks from downtown, and I hear that train all the time. So, anyway, as far as the guiding principle by which I live my life, I was raised all over the country. I have, not by my choice, by my parents' choice. I have lived in a lot of different cultures, and I am very aware that there are a lot of people who are different than me and believe different than me. And I'm very open to listening to and hearing what those people have to say. And I think that's an asset and a benefit I would bring to the commission.
Mr. Machenbacher.
I would consider myself to be a Christian man and a family man. And the greatest, you know, person on earth is my wife, who I'm married to. And the four greatest things that have happened to me since her are my four children. I mean, they're such a blessing. And I like to consider myself as living my life for others. I always put other people first before myself. And this actually drives my wife nuts at times, because I've got, I can tell you, currently, I have projects at home that need to get done. But if my neighbors or if my friends or someone needs something done, I will take time out of my day to go help them out. And just a quick 30-second story here. Back when we were having the flood, I spent 11 straight days down on south side of town sandbagging. And I had a lady down in Southport ask me what house I lived in. And I said, I live up on Bermuda Drive, way on the north side of town. She goes, well, what are you doing down here? I said, I'm helping you. And she said, well, why are you helping me? I said, because when the tornado comes and wrecks my house, I expect you to be up there.
And we'll extend that same question, the final question of this evening, to Mr. Josh Axvig.
Thanks, Dot. Family first, community, hard work, commitment, things I think I've tried to exemplify the last four years. My family always comes first. And if anyone has ever doubted that, they only have to look at, A, my palm card, and they have to look at, the first thing I try and figure out is, can I get away? Will Crystal allow me to go do this? Community. You know, I had the opportunity as a young man to attend North Dakota Boys State. And the Legionnaires and the North Dakota America Legion gave me an opportunity that taught me to believe in our style of government and public service and in giving back to your community. Mike was there for 11 straight days. I think I did 19 straight days of sandbagging during the flood, in addition to the city commission meetings and other things that we worked on. Hard work. I don't think I have to tell you that when I do something, I work hard at it, and I try and be the best that I can be at it. And commitment. I would have never told you that I was going to be a marathon runner until I decided it's what I wanted to do, and I jump in, and we get it done. So that's how I talk about it.
Now candidates, thank you all for being here this evening. You now have one minute to provide a closing comment. We'll begin with Ms. Guy.
Thank you, Dot. Well, I'd like to talk about my background, 30 years in business and public service. I've been a small business owner. I've been a software development business consultant. I've been a consumer advocate, and I've, I'm currently a nonprofit operations director. All of these things uniquely qualify me to make the decisions that are facing our community. Whether it's streamlining city government for efficient delivery of services, budgeting responsibly to hold down our taxes, promoting a diverse economic base, ensuring a transparent local government that's responsive to its citizens' needs, or caring for our most vulnerable citizens, I think that my professional and public service experiences combined with my personal values are the right qualifications for the city commission.
And now Mrs. Miller.
I just want to say thank you for inviting me here. And unlike the gentleman over there, I wasn't sandbagging with everybody. I was actually flying over it and moving back home. And we did, we moved home in a horrible time. And we're a military family still. And when we got the chance to kind of request where we wanted to go, we said North Dakota. And they asked us, why? Why would you want to go there? And I said, because it's home. And we want to go home. Bismarck is home. North Dakota's home. My family's from here. My husband's from here. My kids are going to grow up here. Bismarck will be my home. And I want to make sure that it can be some young families' home as well. Make them come here, that they're invited, that they can live here, see it as a safe place to raise their family. And that's, that's what I want to do when I get on the commission. I want to make Bismarck appealing to young families, and make them want to call North Dakota home and call Bismarck home as well. And thank you again.
Mr. Phil.
Likewise, thank you for the opportunity. Josh and I visited briefly here when we got started. And this has been a fantastic opportunity, going door-to-door, meeting the residents of Bismarck. I started probably knocking on doors around February 8th, and I haven't stopped since. I don't plan on stopping. And it's been a fantastic opportunity. Result of that is people sense a real disconnect with the leadership. And, and that's more born out of communication breakdown. I'm not pointing fingers or anything like that. So all of that to say that I'm asking for the vote of the citizens of Bismarck. I will cast vision. I will listen to your concerns, hear your responses to that vision, and I will vote on the commission according to your will and not mine. Thank you.
Mr. Poole, final comments.
Yeah, I'm, I'm an economist. I'm a scientist. I'm a planner. I have a background as a private business owner, as a science administrator, and as an educator. My background is I have graduate degrees in economics and natural resources. And I've been focusing on, as a natural resources planner, at all levels of government and for the private sector for the last 20 years. I think the skills as an economist, a planner, and a teacher provide many of the skills that I think are going to be necessary for the commission to prepare Bismarck for its future. And one of the things I think is really important is to recognize part of what the two gentlemen over here alluded to, is that this is a culture that's so different from so many areas of the country. You look at, in 2009, when I ran sandbag operations, we had over 5,000 volunteers show up to Sandbags Central and help their community members get ready for a flood. In the last flood, you're right, how many people came out and just, I've got to pick up, I can help haul sandbags, or spent days upon days with no skin in the game to help protect their neighbor? I think that's part of the culture of the upper Midwest, and I think we need to hold on to that in our city.
Mr. Markwart.
Thank you, Dot. I'm going to just expand a little bit on another. The citizens trusted me with their students and to provide them with a better education for eight years. I'm going to take that same dedication that I had to them and the growth of the Bismarck Public School District to the city. I've got the background to be able to listen to the public. I've got the background to sit in those long budget meetings. I've got the background to listen and be available to the public, which I have already. That, by the definition itself, is public service. You have to be available for the public to get ahold of you. You have to be there for them. I was there sandbagging. My boys were sandbagging. We lived on the north side, too. So, I mean, it's a community, and we have to consider this as a community, north side, south side, the whole city. And we have to make decisions based on that and find the funding to be able to fund those programs and our streets. Thank you.
Ms. Baden-Hop.
I gave a lot of thought to whether or not I wanted to run for this position. And I talked to a lot of people and talked to some previous commissioners, city commissioners and current city commissioners. And I wanted to make sure that I could adequately do this job and devote the time and the commitment that it takes to serve the citizens of Bismarck well. And I made a decision that I could do that. I chose to move here, having lived all over the country, because I recognized that Bismarck is an exceptional community and that we have a lot to offer. And I believe that I am the right person to help guide Bismarck into the future and ensure that we maintain the same quality of life that has attracted a lot of people to live here.
Mr. Machenbacher.
I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters once again for giving us the opportunity tonight. I'd like to share a really humbling story really quick. Just a few short months ago, I was delivering meals for the church to shut-ins. It's the first time I had ever done it. I was, I was brought into a situation that I really did not even know existed in the city. These people were supposed to pay just, I mean, a few dollars for these meals, and I couldn't do it. I could not take the money from these people. I think us citizens and commissioners and everybody needs to work together in the city, and we need to take care of, you know, some of these people. I don't think the government should be necessarily the one to take charge in this thing. I think the community, together, needs to go ahead and do this. We personally need to do this. And just the last part in this is, I would like to say that I really believe the private sector is the future of Bismarck. It's what's going to drive the economy. And I've been in the private sector for the last 20-plus years, and I'd like to continue to bring these ideas to a new city commission. Thank you.
And now Commissioner Axvig.
Thanks, Dot. Thank you again to the League of Women Voters, the Bismarck Tribune, Dakota Media Access, and my fellow candidates for being here. It's been an honor to serve you as a Bismarck City Commissioner the last four years. And when you're growing as we are, you have two choices. You can let growth happen and react to it, or you can grow on your terms. And for the last four years, I've worked hard to make sure Bismarck grows on Bismarck's terms. It's why I led the way in creating a strategic plan that lays out the roadmap for what the future of Bismarck looks like. It spawned curbside recycling. It spawned the new land use development plan. It has spawned our vision for what Bismarck is going to be in the next four years. And it takes leadership and vision to get the right results. And it also helps to have a personal investment. I'm lucky enough to have three, Mikhail, Kennedy, and Leila. And so every day when I think about, how can we make Bismarck a brighter and better place for all of us, I'm thinking about, how do we make Bismarck the best place to be for my family and yours? I'm Bismarck City Commissioner Josh Axvig. I'm asking for your vote on June 10th, and thank you for the opportunity.
Well, I wish to also thank the Bismarck Tribune, Dakota Media Access, and the volunteers from the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum. Thank you to the viewers at home and the audience members here tonight for taking the time to learn more about the candidates and issues. This program will replay several times on Government Access Cable Channel 2 and will be available for online viewing at www.freetv.org in the days leading up to the June 10th election. Before we close this candidate forum... Before we close this candidate forum, I want to remind you that voting in North Dakota is very simple, and you can find voting information at your county auditor's office and from the office of the North Dakota Secretary of State. Thank you all and good night.